Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, March the 22nd. Welcome to staff, members of council, and anyone who's watching online. I'll be chairing the meeting for today because our mayor is on vacation. And without any further ado, I will call this meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, the acceptance of the agenda, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Move of myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry accept the agenda of the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any additions? Are there any items that council members would like to put on the agenda for discussion? Yes?
I got an email from a constituent in Maxwell concerning the speed limits coming into town. And it was the number one complaint that I got as I was campaigning. I had all three entrances into Maxwell that the speed coming in was really excessive, and it's pretty much staying that way.
Okay.
So just trying to find a solution to maybe slow things down or...
Okay, we can put that on the agenda for discussion. Where should it go? Under other business? Okay, under number eight, other business. Speeding in Maxwell. Okay. Thank you, councillor Martin. Anything else? Anybody? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. No delegations. Staff reports, 5A, Administration Department. Councillor Cadell, please put it on the table. Yeah, draft strategic plan and priorities.
Well, thank you. Move by myself and seconded by councillor Martin, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number PW 2023-13, annual wastewater system report for Alexandria and Maxwell for information purposes.
No. Who has the motion, the draft strategic plan priorities? Just, yeah, turn your mic on. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, thanks, and thanks. So, again, move by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry recommends to council that the draft strategic plan and priorities for 2023 to 2026 be approved as presented.
Thank you very much, councillor. Do they present, and then we vote on it, or we vote on it?
Yeah, so I speak and then we vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I am pleased to present the draft strategic plan to council and staff today. So as staff and council knows, we met on March 2nd and 3rd and discussed our previous strategic plan, our vision, mission, and then any initiatives that we wanted to see over the next number of years. We certainly had a couple of really great days, a lot of good brainstorming, a really open discussion with the facilitator. And from that, we've put together the draft strategic plan that you see in the package. There was an update to it, which I sent out, and I know Jenna did update it as well on the website. So I'll just briefly go through it. The first page is obviously just an introduction, the table of contents. We put a little message together from the mayor and CAO with a little picture of you all on there. That's where we get into the meat and potatoes of the actual plan. So as we discussed in that two days, we have our mission statement. We had decided to not change our mission statement from last time. We all felt at that time that it really encompassed the, you know, the way we all feel about North Glengarry Township, and felt that that was sort of our overall mission statement for the township. And certainly, we agreed as SMT reviewed it afterwards. From that was a discussion around the vision statement, and so we had come up with this as sort of a culmination of all the different words that people came up with from there, with the overall arching that we're ready to go when it comes to what we really heard from those two days, which is that we're ready for development. We're ready to certainly keep in mind the culture, the heritage, the, you know, the environment, et cetera, of North Glen, but that we really want to see that growth. So from there, we came up with three strategic pillars where we're looking at grow, foster, and champion. So under the growth strategy is the development. So from there is the transportation action plan and the economic development action plan. As we went through those two days, we really highlighted the importance, and we've talked about it even over the last number of months, around our roads, you know, the transportation of people, cars, et cetera. So really developing that action plan when it comes to transportation and infrastructure, including water and wastewater in that as well. And then the second, to that pillar being, obviously, the development, economic development action plan. I've not called them master plans on purpose because I find that the wording of a master plan gets lost. And I think what we're really looking for here is more of an action plan to say this is what we're going to do over the next number of years. Not a master plan that sits on the shelf is something that perhaps we may reference over the years. So the economic development action plan, myself and the Director of Community Services have connected a bit about this, with the discussion that we do have a really good basis for that active plan, and that we'll be looking at, you know, updating that over the next number of months. The second pillar being fostering, so taking what we currently have here in North Glen, fostering that through the communications sustainability strategies, through the communications action plan, and the parks and recreation action plan. Because we really heard over those two days, we do need to see some, you know, revitalization of some of our current parks and rec assets, as well as the opportunity for the community to comment on what our current parks and rec assets are, and what they might want to see North Glengarry invest in over the next number of years. The last pillar being champion. So we really spoke a lot about those days, and we've seen over the last number of years, the idea of a regional approach when it comes to things. So for instance, even in, we've seen recently with Tim's department with the regional wastewater master plan. We've seen in some joint purchasing. So the regional collaboration action plan will include those different items, as well as expanding beyond that into, you know, maybe some opportunities within Prescott Russell as well, being that they're our neighbors. And then obviously, the provincial lobbying action plan as well. So we talked a lot about, you know, the importance of education, our hospitals. We've asked for quite a number of delegations, for instance, at the Good Roads Conference coming up, to continue to speak to the provincial government about infrastructure, housing, education, all those important provincial government initiatives. So those are the three main pillars that we've identified as what we want to focus on, based on the foundation. So we had spoken about human resources as being a huge advantage that we have here in North Glengarry with a very strong staff. And how do we keep those people? How do we recruit new people as we see retirements coming? Information technology, so looking at, you know, the cybersecurity network hardware, all of that sort of plan to come. Obviously, Kim wants some financial stability in there, saying that we don't have, you know, a money tree. We need to make sure that we have that financial stability through, you know, good debt, reserves, et cetera, et cetera. And then also, you know, premised on our corporate values that we've come up with, which are in detail in the report. So Jenna, if you want to go to the next slide. This is just sort of... Oh, this didn't turn out as well on the, on this. It's kind of slipped over there. But so basically, that everything I just sort of talked about is on this next page in the strategic plan. So the different components, and then obviously, on the very last page with the foundation as well. So just more of an explanation of what I've sort of verbally described. And again, it kind of stretched out on the slide there, but on the PDF, it's a, it's a good, a good version, I guess. And then the last page just being some nice photos of our beautiful township. So certainly, very excited to get going on this. I think I put that in our CAO mayor message. I know staff are excited to get going, so I'm certainly open to any comments. I have had a couple of council members ask for some additions, so certainly today or between now and Monday evening, because I would like to get this approved on the Monday evening at council meeting, so we can get going on the different initiatives that are included, so.
Thank you very much for that, Sarah. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I would like to see, and I know we discussed this at previous, last, in last terms, council. We talked about safety on our roads and speeds on our roads. And we had sort of committed to looking at that and developing a strategy for the whole township, as opposed to sort of road by road or whatever, but the whole township and what we could look at for safety and speeds. So I'd like to make sure that that is included in the comprehensive road plan that we're talking about under grow. So maybe it could just be added after, or it says comprehensive road plan, it could just be including, including safety and speeds on our roads.
Certainly.
Great, thank you. Other comments, questions? I guess it's pretty perfect, then.
Councillor Massey has also asked that we do a French version, so certainly we can do that as well.
That's a good point. I was just going to ask, I think it's excellent. It's concise, it's to the point, it covers really, you know, where council was going during the strategic planning. I think it's excellent. I think it, what could, it could use our, exactly who is going to be kind of tackling some of these. If we, if we can identify the individuals that will be involved and in charge of pushing these things forward, I think that would be ideal, and maybe some timelines.
Okay.
That's just my thought. But otherwise, it looks great. Anything else? Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor of the motion? Great. Carried. Thank you very much. Thanks for that, Sarah. You put a lot of work into that. And thank you, staff, as well, for your good ideas and participation. And I think this is going to give us an excellent roadmap for the next four years. So thanks. Okay, on to staff report, the Treasury Department, and the variance report, March 2023. Councillor Manley, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Move of myself, seconded by councillor Madden, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives report TR 2023-10, variance report for March, for information purposes only.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
Very early to any comment, as everything is basically on track, because it's only been a few months in, basically. No real concerns at this point in time. There is, throughout right now, there is variance.
This is through all the insurance lines. In the past, there's been just an allocation of insurance to the various departments. But this year, I tackled the actual invoicing, and there was some discrepancies on where things should be charged. So I have charged them where they need to be charged. So in 2024, there'll have to be a reallocation to fix this. But really, I have no concerns at this point in time.
That's good news. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Massey.
Yes, thanks. I don't know about anybody else, but could we, thank you for the report. I like to see this report every two, three months. There is very handy for us anyways. But could you divide, like, the expenses and revenues? Because I know it works by code, but I'm going down the thing. Okay. I know about, but if you'd separate the...
I can certainly separate it. And the goal is, and it's been in my work plan for the last two years, I try to get this to council quarterly. So, sorry, March, June, September, and then closer to the end of December. So for sure, and I can separate it. It's not a problem.
That's great. Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Kim, there was a note in somewhere about monies due for the arena, and I think it was 1.4. And I'm just curious how, you mentioned it's not great for cash flow. I'm just...
Okay. Basically, when we're dealing with any of the provincial and federal claims lately, there is a severe lag. The Creek Road Bridge, the lag between actually getting payment was about eight months. It's supposed to be six to eight weeks, or eight to 12 weeks. The problems with this is they're claim-based grants. So we've already spent the money, and now we have to ask for the money back. This, one of them was submitted in July, and I kind of kicked up a stink in December, asking where our money was. And they said, oh, yeah, well, we're looking into it. Well, all of a sudden, they started looking into it. So of course, I sent the second and third, second and final grants in, claim forms in. Still have not received the funds. Apparently, it's being processed, but I still have not received the funds.
So this is our operating line of credit that we sort of...
Actually, it's really good right now because of the way we time our interim taxes. It handles, like, it's a February installment and April installment. So the February one handles the snow problems, if there's excessive snowfall. Also, the February one helps us, because some people pay both installments, and that makes it great for our remittance to the county. So it's for the end of March and the school board. So we kind of time the cash flow accordingly, so we're, touch wood, we're fine.
Anything else? I just have a question about capital. There are some items, and this is on page 31. There are some items in capital that have been spent but aren't budgeted.
So in regards to this, the, there is one line for the budget, and then there's several lines for the actuals. So for administration, for example, let's say it's $40,000. I'm just going to pull, just use that as a number. The total budget may be 40,000, and it's under one line. However, that 40,000 might be made up of 10,000 worth of computers, $20,000 worth of furniture. So it'll get, it'll get charged individually, but it's part of the overall budget. So it's not like there's not a line item for it. It's just the way it's, it's just the way it's recorded.
So is it in one of these other ones?
Well, if you take a look, if you take a look at the first one, under 151200, 8,000, under administration.
Yeah.
The actual budget for it is 120,000, the second line.
Yeah.
But we spent 363,000 on assets, and we've spent 19,843 under, it's recording devices. That's what record is stand for. So that 19 and that 3, which equate to 22,000 roughly, is what we've spent of the 120 budgeted.
I see, okay.
So if you take a look at the account numbers, that's where you see the budget and...
Oh, it's all one account?
Yeah. So what I can do in the future is maybe do a subtotal by those areas, so it's very clear for council.
Sure.
I can do that for you.
That would be helpful. Thank you very much. Great. All right, well, is there anything else? Seeing nothing? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you very much. Thanks for that, Kim. Now on to Building Planning and Bylaw Department. Update on clearcutting bylaw number 432021. Councillor Madden, please put it on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number BP-2023-04, for information purposes only, as an update on the clearcutting bylaw number 43-2021.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead, Jacob.
Thank you, Miss Deputy Mayor. So, yeah, council, I'd ask for a little update on the clearcutting bylaw. So as you know, the bylaw was created mostly to regulate clearcutting and not to prevent clearcutting. And it's like to help with all the nuisance associated with the clearcutting. It's done to comply with the best farming practices as well. So up to now, it has been worked, it has worked really well. We've had a lot of questions by other townships as well. I sent it to at least four townships. They wanted to have a look, because aside, I think Alfred Platajne has something similar or more strict, but aside from them, we're pretty much the only one with such a bylaw. So there's been a lot of interest from other townships to do something similar. So that's, I guess, a good thing. So the intent of the bylaw, just to refresh your memory, and for those who weren't there for the process there, it applies only to clearcutting that are more than 2.5 acres, or anything under that. So if you buy a property and you want to build your house on it, if you cut less than 2.5 acres, you don't fall under the bylaw's restriction. So that's, it's easy, because we've had a lot of people call in, and we just say that it's like, it's clearcutting for a house and blah, blah, blah. So it's, it's okay. It's not enough to, like, this was made really for nuisance regarding clearcutting of fields for farmers, really. So it was passed by council in October 2021. So anything that started before that was allowed to continue without having to apply for this bylaw. So there was a lot of, like, especially in 20, I guess, early 2022, we've got a lot of complaints, because of course, everybody learned that this was existing. We've got, I believe, five official complaints regarding clearcutting. All of them were, had started before the date. So what we do first, of course, as we go, we talk to the owner. Three of them showed us proof, like receipts, from the year before, from the contractor, that it has started in, one of them had even started in 2018, I believe. So this satisfied us in the sense that it started before. The other one showed us picture. And like, we do talk to both the complainant and the owner to make sure that, at least if, like, we know they don't have to apply, they don't have to pay for the permit, but just to make sure that they do, they do it properly, basically. And most of the time, it worked really, really well. So just a quick, quick wrap-up. So how it works, the farmer, usually it's a farmer, but the farmer applies if he's cutting more than 2.5 acres per year. So just another thing here, two of, two landowners in the township, they're not actually going around it on purpose, but they're just cutting some wood for resale on their property. So we are, like, we are aware that this is going on. We just told them that they have to cut less than 2.5 acres per year. So they cut it themselves. It's not a big issue. They don't cut a lot more, but we're trying to control them in that sense, because otherwise, we'd have to reissue a small permit every year. So we just told them, try to stay under the 2.5. So it has happened. It's mostly for resale of wood, basically. And one of them, it's for even personal use. So we're just, that's another thing that we're seeing. People are, like, if you're cutting a little bit more or whatever, and some of them, it's like in a wooded area, but not so much. So it's half fields, half farms. So we're just trying to figure it out. So it can go up to a maximum of $500 for your permit. We process it within 30 days. We post it on the property. We ask that the permit is posted on the property, and we send it to all the adjacent neighbors. So the process seems to be working, because as you'll see further down the report, well, we've only had two up to now, but the two that we've issued, the neighbors have called and they have asked questions, just to make sure, blah, blah, blah. So property line, most of the questions were regarding property lines. So the process seems to be working well. We have not received, like, complaints on the two permits that we have issued, so that's good. Yeah, so and then they post on the property, they do the work, and they call in where they're done. When they are done, we go on site to make sure it's been done as per the permit, and that's what it is. How the bylaw works, I pretty much explained it. So as of March 2023, so as of today, as I said, we've only issued two permits. So you see them there, one on Kenyon Concession 6, the other one on St. Anne Road in Dalkeet. One of them just started, the other one is finalized. And like I said, we have been on site to check and talk with the owners and everything. We've got concerns by neighbors, but we did resolve them. Both permits were issued to the maximum amount of $500. So I know we were discussing that amount. I'm, I kind of have the feel, like, most of the clearcutting happened before the passing of the bylaw. As you know, everybody did it before we passed the bylaw, because they were afraid they couldn't cut anymore. So down the road, eventually, I'm assuming that all the permits will be to the maximum of $500. So up to now, it seems to be enough to cover our costs for site visits and everything, but I'll let you know if that changes. Yeah, five official complaints, which we resolved. And we're currently investigating one, but actually, it's two, because I received an email yesterday regarding another one. So there's two that we're checking into right now. Again, I would say 80% of the time when we get calls on that, especially from the neighbors, it's always for property lines. It's not for, it's not for fire. It's not for, like, concerns about anything about farming. Like, no one told us, we don't want a field there because of the smell, blah, blah. It's always for property lines. So rightfully so. I mean, you want to keep your tree kids on your property. So that seems to be the biggest issue. So that kind of helps with that, because we can tell the tree cutter that he has to remain on his side. Otherwise, we can force him to do a survey. So survey would cost thousands of dollars. So the, it's working well. So, yeah, that's it for that. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you very much for your report. Questions? Go ahead, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. Jacob, when, like, somebody applies for a permit, and then do you contact the neighbors beside?
Yeah. We send a letter to all adjacent neighbors, so all the property.
I didn't get any on that sixth, on the sixth.
And you're directly adjacent to it?
Beside him, yeah. Which is okay, but I didn't get a letter.
Oh, okay, I can check that. But yeah, it's, so I wrote that joke. I'll check it out. But yeah, when someone is directly, when your lot is directly adjacent to it, you're supposed to have received a letter, but I'll definitely make sure.
Just do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments from council members? I don't know. I think this, this bylaw... I don't know, I, I think this, this bylaw, for all of the headache it was for, for certainly staff, I know, but also for council members, it was, it was a tough haul getting this done. And I think it's been pretty successful so far. And, and, you know, even if it just resolves some of those really important issues, like the property lines, and we don't have people clearing on other people's land, then it's all worth it. Go ahead, Counselor Massey.
Just one little note. And this bylaw le, is followed by the new Rural and Ag Committee also, which is basically why we created that committee, I think, just so the two committees could have a chance to discuss stuff. As a, so, yeah, out of that bylaw, the, our five thousand dollars a year donation for replanting, plus the Rural and Ag Committee, so it did a lot of good to, for the township and the citizens, just saying.
Agreed. Yeah. Do you have something else?
Well, yeah, I just want to say, I spoke to a few farmers, and most of them, I think it was just like, again, it all sounds like the Donald Trump thing, but it was just misinformation, right? They didn't know what we were trying to do. So once they learned that it was basically just get a permit and do your cutting, like, if you're a good farmer who could, who works well, there's zero issues with that. It was really for the problematic situation. So I think, I haven't heard any bad comments on it, either from either side of, of the table.
No, neither have I.
Right, no.
Which is good. Okay, if there's nothing else, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you very much. And number three, administrative monetary penalties. Counselor Manley, please. Which? Number two. Sorry about that. Update on shipping container bylaw amendment. Counselor Martin.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the committee of the whole of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number BP two, twenty-twenty-three dash oh-five for information purposes only as the update of the shipping container bylaw amendment.
Thank you for that. Okay, please go ahead, Jacob.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, counsel, I...
I talked about that a few meetings ago, and it was kind of a good timing, because we meet, like, all the chief building officials meet once in a while, and this also came up at that meeting over there, because we're not the only township who's having issues with that. So ours was created, somewhere back in March twenty-fifteen. So this, when the issue first came up. And it was passed under the zoning bylaw. So ours is actually, it's not a bylaw by itself, like the tree canopy bylaw is really just a bylaw. This was created under the zoning bylaw, which is kind of good, because it's easy to, to, now we're gonna incorporate it in our next zoning bylaw, which is coming soon. So that's, that's the good thing. And it was really to regulate the storage of shipping containers and commercial vehicles, where we had some, some little problems. So we're in, in SD and G, even in Prescott Russell, I can say that this is one thing that is really confusing for residents, because they, none of the townships are doing the same thing for these, for these things. So if you're in, if you're, for example, in South Stormont, there's zero regulation. So you can have that wherever you want, however you want. Boom, that's it. And then there's us at the other end of the, of the table, that's, that's really, really strict, and it regulates where and how many, and blah, blah, blah. And in all the townships, it's all different, and people are handling these all differently. Even in the building code, it's not clear whether, is it a building? Is it not a building? Blah, blah, blah. So it is something that's confusing. Here, like Todd and I, we kind of like the way ours is written, because it's, it's more black and white, so it helps for that. Just quick explanation on how it is here. So shipping containers are really those, the containers that you see, like, right off the, the C-cans, basically. You all know what they look like. They're kind of a, a eyesore when they're installed in the middle of a residential property, which is why this bylaw was created. So again, here, most of the time, what happens, like, we, we get a lot of complaints on those. Most of the time, what happens is that the person buys that without even knowing that he's not allowed to have that. So, and like, we get that story, like, I didn't know, I need a permit, blah, blah, blah. And sometimes we know it's, it's BS, but sometimes we know it's not. Like, in this case, most of the time, I, I can, I know it's, it's not. Like, the person really did not know they could not have that. So it's hard to, to go there and tell the guy who just bought this two-thousand-dollar thing, you have to move it somewhere else. You have to do something else with it, because you can't have it there. So that's the situation we're having with those C-cans. More and more, I'm getting phone calls, though, so this is good, because I can give them a heads-up. So here in the township, you're only allowed one for agricultural use. That, that's what the bylaw says. One for agricultural use, and only in the industrial zone, agricultural zones, and rural zones. So basically, any property that's, that's outside of urban settlement area. So in any town, whether it's like Greenfield or Glen Robertson, even these rural settlement area, they can't be there, Alexandria, Maxville either. So they can't be anywhere except for outside of towns, and only one per property. So what happens when we get a complaint with those? We usually go onsite, and we explain the bylaw to the person. And this is where we, we give them a few options, basically. The first one is, the easiest one, is just to remove the container from the property. Problem solved, that's it. Just, also, if the container has been there before twenty-fifteen, it can stay there. So if they can prove that the container's there, we, we don't, like, when we, we know where they are also, like, we see them when we, when we go around. So when we see a new one pop up, we do stop. But when we know it's been there for a while, we don't really patrol them. Well, like, we're not trying to create issues either, but... So if he removes it from the property, problem solved, that's it. The other option they have is to apply for minor variance. But again, this here, like, it's, like, council is not really the most enthusiastic about those, so we try to explain that, they can go either way with the committee of adjustment. And we also, we emphasize on the fact that, that staff will not necessarily recommend the installation of this, of the container, or this, of the second container, blah, blah, blah. So we, we, not that we try to, to change their mind, but we just explain that it's gonna be a hard process, and you have to work hard to, to keep it there. So the third option is sometimes the one that we see happen. So what they have to do is basically just go and talk to an engineer and apply for a building permit. So for us, when it's just a container, when there's one on an ag property, they don't have to apply. They just put it there, that's it. If they do apply for a permit, we tell them, go see an engineer, make sure it's structurally safe and sound, and you have to, to cover it up. Like, you have to decorate it in the way that it's not a container. So it's just basically like a shed. So we've seen that happen many times, where people just, like, they put steel or vinyl or whatever, a little roof on it, and boom, you've got a nice little shed. So that, that seems to be the best option for the people. So we just try to, to help. And I'm sure you've seen those also, where there's two on each side and a big roof over it. So basically, that's the same thing. We just tell them, well, you can't have the C-cans there. You have to decorate them or whatever, so they don't look like C-cans. And get us an engineer, get us a permit, and you're good to go. So that seems to be the, the best option. And it, it's working somewhat well. I mean, we're having some issues, but at least we have the bylaw to work with. And that's something that, when we talk to the counties for our zoning update, we ask that this would be incorporated in it. And most of, like I said, that at the CBO township, at the CBO meeting, and most of them do want something also, because some can't do anything. So they're kind of stuck with these big containers and people complaining. So that's how we, we worked this one out. Under the same bylaw, there's the commercial vehicle and trailers. So we don't have a lot of issues with that. This is mostly just for, like, for parking of, of big trailers used for storage or blah, blah, blah. So we do consider that same as the container. So get it out, decorate it, do something. And the other little part on this would be, like, if you drive a tractor-trailer, well, you can't park it in front of other people's property. You can't block the view, blah, blah, blah. So this is not really an issue, like, I mean, people, most of the time, it's for school buses. So when people use to park their school bus on the side of the road for all evening and up to the next morning, so... The, the companies are, like McEwen and Maxville is good for that, because they let some people park on their property everywhere with no charge. Like, they just, there's a few tractor-trailer drivers there. They park at McEwen, so that, it removes the entire problem. School bus, I mean, people are aware that it's their means of living, so they, it's not really, not really a problem. But at least we have that in that bylaw. And it's gonna stay there. We don't have any problems with it staying there, so, yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much for your report. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So Jacob, on a, on a trailer, like a tractor-trailer, just a trailer park, no truck there, whatever. Do we have any, I'm, I'm thinking of one in particular that's sitting...
I know which one.
On Lockery Road.
Wait, other corner there?
On the corner. And it's been sitting there for twenty-plus years.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's being used for anything. Is there any way that we can, I mean, it's a bit of an eyesore, to be quite honest.
Yeah, we, again, this is the twenty-fifteen issue, because it's been there for, like you said, for years and years. We can try to figure something out. We did talk to this landowner. He told us he's, he's using it. So I don't know if he is or not, but we can, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't seem like there's anything, the grass is never cut around it, and it's never, I mean, it's, yeah.
And I don't think he's living there.
No, I don't think so either. That, it's vacant property or whatever.
We can, I, I can check into that.
Okay.
Wait, well, till the snow goes, but...
To, to Counselor Manley's point, can we add something or, or talk about adding something in this bylaw to, to deal with the grandfathering issue? Because we've got some containers, you know, on Main Street in Alexandria, you know, that, that, at this point in time, we have no authority over them in asking them to, to remove them. Can, can we talk about sort of, okay, notifying the owners of these containers that are, what, what do you call it? Non, non-conforming?
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming? And say, you know, you, you have two, two years to either upgrade it to an actual shed or, or garage, or remove it. Can, can we do something like that?
I'll, I'll check into that to see what our options are for that.
Because otherwise, you know, they're, they're gonna be there forever.
Yep, I'll...
And, you know, same with, like, the south of town there. I, I mean, some people actually, you line them up and use them as a fence. You know, it's not, it's not really appropriate, I don't think, especially in an urban environment. And, and I believe that there's one on Main Street in Maxville as well.
There is, that one we dealt with, yeah. The, he's one of the ones that wasn't even aware that he couldn't have that.
Right.
It's gonna be gone soon, when spring comes.
Excellent, thank you.
You're the one on the parking lot there, the vacant, why, why? This one's gonna go.
That's great, thanks. Okay, anything else from anyone? Okay, then all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you very much. And then the final one, administrative monetary penalties. Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the committee of the whole of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number BP twenty-twenty-three dash zero-six, and that the committee of the whole of the township of North Glengarry recommends to council that staff implement the administrative monetary penalties, AMPS program.
Thank you, Counselor Manley. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor. Yeah, so this is a new, a new program, I guess, created under the municipal act. It's, it's made to unclog the court system and stuff. It's basically for, to give people fines without going through the whole judicial system. So this is, it's, it's very new. Not a whole lot of municipalities are using it as of now. A lot of them will be soon, because it's on paper for now, anyway. It sounds very good. I'll explain how it works. I know South, North Dundas is really working hard to get this going, so they're probably gonna be the first ones implementing that. So we'll see how it, how it goes over there. The city of Ottawa is already using it, I believe. So what it is, so instead of, of having that typical fine that we can give out for if you do an infraction to one of our bylaws, it's called more like a penalty or a notice of penalty. So it's pretty much the same thing in the sense that it's, it's a money fine, like, you have to, to pay the township, but it works a little bit differently. So right now, when we write a ticket, the, first of all, the ticket has to be registered with the court system in Cornwall. So we have to drive up there and register our ticket. And then the person who, if they want to appeal the ticket, they appeal with the court system. So after, when that happens, we have to get a lawyer, we have to waste a day in court, blah, blah, blah. And we're not, Todd and I are not really strong on fines here, and it's probably one of the reasons why, because it's just like, you give a two-hundred-dollar fine, you end up spending a day in court. It's not even worth it. So we try to work, to work it a different way. This here will probably help. So what it is, we have the exact same bylaws. So we don't change the bylaws at all, but instead of, of writing a ticket, you write the penalty. So basically, what it is, is you tell the guy, well, I'm giving you a fine. You have, the fine is for whatever, two-hundred dollars. You have two weeks to come and pay at the township. So everything is, is dealt with here at the township. We keep all the money when they pay, blah, blah, blah. So it's all dealt in-house here. So we give out this fine, and then instead of appealing to the courts, they would, we would have someone who's called a screening officer here at the township. So let's say, if Todd gives the fine, for example, I could be the screening officer, or the clerk could be the screening officer. So if, if they don't agree with the penalty or whatever, they can appeal the ticket. So they come here at the township, we just have a little meeting. The screening officer is allowed to modify the ticket. So he's allowed to do anything just right off the bat like that at the table. So he can modify the fine, he can, he can affirm it, or he can cancel it. So, and then if he squashes it, it's the end of the process. So it helps in the fact that, for example, for grass cutting. So if someone keeps always, like, not cutting his grass, blah, 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 well, right now, what we're doing is we're give, we send someone there to cut the grass, which we will still do, but we would be able to give him this fine first. So let's say, and the, the amounts are set by the township as well. So if the township decides that it's five hundred dollars when you, when you don't cut your grass, well, Todd can go onsite, five hundred dollars, you have two weeks to pay. Well, if this guy cuts his grass the next day, he can come at the township. Todd can just go, yes, you cut the grass, we take the ticket, we tear it apart, end of story. So it's really, really simple in that sense. We can do it with all the bylaws, so clean yards, even building bylaw, even, I'm not sure about planning issues, but, and we even, building, it's like, this is more for when you want to get compliance right now. So for, two best examples are clean yards, like, if you want someone to clean their yard, if you want someone to cut its grass. So these are the quick, even for dogs, too, it can help, like, loose dog or not-registered dog. You give him a fine, blah, blah, blah. If they come, they get, they pay the extra for the dog tag, well, we squash the ticket, that's it. For something, like, this is when you want compliance right now. For something bigger, you're still, we can still use the same process. So one of the example that came up is someone starts building a house without a permit. Well, like, you're not gonna give him a five-hundred-dollar fine. He's not gonna destroy the foundation, blah, blah, blah. So for that, we would still use the old process in the courts, where we bring the guy to court, and the judge would decide what we do in the fine and if he demolish the house. So we would just use that for small things, like I said, dogs and grass and cutting. So, and then if, like, if, if I'm the screening officer, I decide that Todd is right, he should have given the ticket, na, 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 there's another step that they can go. So they can go higher, and the other person is called the hearing officer. So the hearing officer is someone that's, it's usually someone from another township, so someone who's not aware of, of the environment, of if there's a history, blah, blah, blah. So it's really just someone that's, like, doesn't have any prejudice. They will just look at, oop, they will just look at the file and decide the same thing. So if they decide that Todd went too strong with this person, na, 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 give more time, less money, well, they can decide to, to squash the ticket. Or they could say, yes, he's, we're affirming the ticket, you have to pay that within thirty days. And if that happens, it's the end of story. He has to pay the ticket. And if he does not pay the ticket, which is the good thing with this program, is that the province is, they're kind of going hand-to-hand with MTO. So the same thing as with parking tickets, if you don't pay this fine, we go to MTO and we register it on his driver's license. So when he goes to, to renew his driver's license, it'll pop up as unpaid fines. So that's the good thing with this. And yet, like I said, all the money would stay here, like, right now... And yet, like I said, all the money would stay here. Like right now, if we give out a ticket, we split with the counties, with the court, na, 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 so we don't get a lot of money. This way here with this system, it's all, the money all stays here, no one else pays anything. So yeah, and just to make sure I explain everything, gives out a ticket, screening ticket, there's the appeal, and then the township retains. So yeah, there's also options for, like, there's no mandatory time period. So if it's a big issue, if it's a big mess on the yard, like he can give a month. If he can give, if it's grass, he can give two days, or I think actually the minimum is fifteen days, but there's no real time period. And the fines, we can also do like, like if, when we decide, like first offense would be $40, second offense would be $100. So we can go like that. It's really easy to, to increase the, the fines. And it can be, same thing as parking tickets, so it can be either in person, mail, it can be fax, I don't know if you'd fax tickets, but email, or on the person's vehicle. So if he's not there, he can just leave the ticket there. Right now, when you give a fine, you have to actually find the owner and give him the ticket in person. With this, with this program, if you know he's the owner, you know it's his car, you can just put it on the windshield and leave. So that's deemed, it's deemed served. So yeah, it's, it sounds like a really good program. We're gonna try and, we're gonna work on it and see like the fines were, maybe wait until the other townships do it, so we'll just copy all their stuff. We're, we're, we're gonna, like, we're, we're, Todd is really excited about this, because it helps a lot just with the fact that you give him the fine, do it or not. If you do it, you will just tear the ticket apart and that's it. If you don't, well, you have to pay the amount, and we'll come the next day and give you another fine if you haven't done it, and it can be higher. So it's, it's a tool that's really useful. And I'm like, where, like, for some, I don't know if, like if someone goes crazy with tickets and blah, 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 that's why I think you have to, the council would have to select a good hearing officer, like just to make sure that it, it's fair, like we're not pinpointing on anybody or whatnot. But on paper, it really sounds like a really good tool for, for bylaw enforcement anyways. So, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much for your report. Go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just want to clarify this. So if, example, we issue a ticket. Yeah, yeah, me. I don't cut my lawn. I get issued a ticket for $150.
Yep.
I don't pay it. That can be applied to my license, so when I renew my license, I gotta pay it then?
Yep.
So nothing to do with vehicle, and it can be applied to a license?
That's what, that's, that's what we got. Yeah, it'll be a thing with MTO there, where, and what, like where it's not a hundred percent sure yet, because right now bylaw officers are not, like, we don't have the power to ask for your driver's license. So, you know, like if, if you, if you say, no, it's not my car, I don't live here, blah, 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 we know you live there, blah, blah, blah. But if you decide to say that you're, so this is where we're still unsure of how it will work. We're assuming that we're gonna have to be accompanied by a police officer that, that have that power. But yeah, once we get driver's license, from what we, from what we understand, it's where it's gonna be registered on your driver's license. And if you don't pay, because there's no more step, like you can't, you can't go to Ontario Court of Appeal with this. So if you don't pay it, the, the last resort for us is we just send it to MTO and it gets added to your.
So, well, I mean, sounds pretty interesting that, I mean, as you mentioned, no court costs, huge cost savings to actually put in place a program that ideally we don't have that many issues or that many reasons to issue them, but if we do, fantastic tool to, to remedy something. It's always where it hurts, right?
Yeah, and I think like where, where this came up, first of all, there was a lot of backlog in the, in the court system, and like, I'm, I'm sure that the, the judge don't want to hear about a dispute about grass cutting, right? So they, they don't care about that stuff, they just like figure it out. So I think that looks like something that's been like more power on municipalities to resolve their own issues, so, and I think it makes sense.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mass, you better start paying your tickets there. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Cadell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to comment that in the cities, the photo radar is similar.
Yeah.
That you get your ticket in the mail, you can fight it in court if you want, or you can just pay it, no demerits points, no record, whatever. So similar to that.
Yeah, yeah.
That seems to be working for them.
It's working many ways for the city anyways.
Jacob? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Manley.
Just, yeah, I just, I like the idea that, that you'd be able to, we have control of that ticket or whatever, and so if it's done right away, which is a lot of the issue, right, that we're having with, with, with the yard, by law, clean yards and that kind of stuff, is, is the process that it takes to get something done is, is months and months. And that's what's frustrating for residents. I know that complain about somebody's yard or whatever, that it's, you know, taking so long, but it's the process, right? If we have this, this tool or whatever, I think it's fantastic.
It is, it's a very good tool, and like when, when you talk money people, you really act a little bit faster. What this doesn't do though is that you still have to go, like for a clean yard, if, if the township would want to clean the yard, we'd still have to go through the Provincial Offenses Act. So we would still have to use the other process, the long process, but at least we can try this first.
Try this first, and if it works, then I think it's great.
Yeah, I agree. Jacob, the, I just lost track of my thoughts here. Is this gonna require more staff?
No, no, if something, you know, like if, like we would probably start giving, like using the tool a little bit more efficiently for, for fines, but now it's actually quicker. Like, when you write a ticket, it's, it's long, and like when you, when Todd issues a fine for clean yards, you have to take a poster, laminate it, go put it on the property, and send it registered mail, and wait the fifteen. This, you just get there, and even if he's not there, just leave it there, and boom, that's it. So, no, it's, if something, this is quicker.
That's excellent, thank you. That's great. Anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion then? Carried, none opposed. Thank you very much, Jacob. Onto Public Works Department. The annual drinking water system summary reports for Alexandria, Maxville, and Glen Robertson. Please, come ahead.
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Move by myself, excuse me, myself, seconded by Councilor Cadell, that the committee of the whole of the township of North Glengarry received staff report number PW 2023-12, annual drinking water system summary for Alexandria, Maxville, and Glen Robertson for information purposes.
Thank you, Councilor Madden.
So for anyone who doesn't know me, Angela Cullen, I work for the township of, for the Waterworks Department. I'm just going through our annual drinking water system report. In the package, you would have received the actual reports that were written that are gonna be submitted to the ministry. We're just going through the PowerPoint summary, so for more information, please refer to the reports themselves. So starting with the drinking water system, starting in Glen Robertson. And this is a small municipal residential drinking water system. Our permits and licenses are current and only need renewal in 2025 and 2026. It's a small drinking water system that utilizes groundwater. We have inline particulate filters, UV disinfection, chlorine disinfection, and monitoring. We have a backup natural gas generator, and there's no secondary storage at the site. We service about forty-five to fifty homes. The flow summaries for 2022, our maximum allowable daily limit is 224 cubic meters. So on average, we took 27.3 cubic meters, and our highest recorded date was 47.3 cubic meters. This represents 12.1% of our system capacity, and it's only increased about 1% from the previous year. On the, there was no major issues with water quality or quantity. On the water loss side, and when we're speaking about water loss, we're talking about water that's treated but not consumed by the customer, so it's lost somewhere from the treatment system before the customer meters. We're about 15%, which is really good for a drinking water system. We did have one discrepancy between February and March. It was all associated with one account. Not exactly sure why it occurred, but it was a deviation, so it threw the numbers out of whack, where it looks like we actually consumed more water than we produced. Onto sampling and analysis for Glen Robertson. As I previously mentioned, for operational monitoring, there was no major deviations. The quality of the water is pretty stable. There's some minor fluctuations in pH and turbidity, but nothing, nothing outrageous or unexpected. On our adverse, on our routine sampling and quarterly sampling, we had no adverses. And in our additional sampling, so we do organic and inorganic testing on our treated water once every three years. Our next, we were sampling this year, so our previous samples are from three years ago, and there was no issues. Our lead program, we are in a reduced monitoring process. So our next set of samples were done, they were just done in March, and then we'll be sampling again in October, I believe. There was no adverses, levels were really low, as expected. We did our fluoride and sodium testing, which has to be done once every five years. Our next set of samples will be in 2027. Fluoride was below the detectable limits, and there was an adverse for sodium, which I'll be describing later. And as far as we're aware, there's no upcoming changes to the sampling as required. Significant expenses in the system was the SCADA installation and the UV installation. The SCADA was triggered by some trending requirements within our licensing requirements. It was commissioned in September 2022. There was a delay in the installation because of COVID, which caused us to do some additional reporting to the ministry. But once it was commissioned, the reporting component was completed. There have been some minor communication issues, which have all been resolved. For the UV installation, we upgraded the three UVs at the site to be able to better communicate with the SCADA system themselves, mostly due to age, wear, and tear. So we should be good for at least another five, 10 years before, before we look at that again. Oops, no, sorry. Operational issues, we had the well pump fail in April 2022. We were without water, the residents were without water for about fourteen and a half hours. Everything was restored within seventeen and a half hours. We did have to wait for sample results before we could lift the boil water. And there was no, there was no issues in the repair, but there is some concern with the well casing sediment, and we are looking into potentially doing some work whenever there's upgrades in the future. The adverse sodium that I referred to earlier, Glen Robertson has a historical, historical issues with high sodium levels. The drinking water limit's 20 milligrams per liter. We tested about 104, which is what we normally see historically. Sodium is not something that we can remove. It's not a health concern. It just triggers communication with residents for anyone who's on a low sodium or restricted sodium diet. We had some issues with the UV units. Basically, they were repaired. There was no treatment issues. We were able to use our standby units until parts were available. And there were some issues with our chlorine dosing, which we're still looking into to try to figure out why one of our pumps won't operate as per design. And then finally, the equipment replacement. So there was the well pump piping connection. There was an intermittent leak. Everything was replaced by September. And we had some distribution pressure problems that were found to be through a pressure control valve. We have temporarily bypassed the unit for now, but we do have to look into scheduling, changing it out to prevent it from reoccurring. Compliance and license permit, compliance, license, permit, approval, and orders. So as you have heard probably multiple times since December, we completed our internal audit. We completed our external audit. We are no longer in, we are, we cleared up all the nonconformant issues that we had from the past. There was no resulting issues, and we're just waiting for our accreditation certificates. For our ministry inspections with the MOE, our inspection was in October. We received a hundred percent rate risk ranking, and there was no compliances. We had two AWQIs, which involved the well pump failure and the sodium. And then for the ongoing multi-barrier approach, we did our risk assessment in March. There was no major system changes. Some minor changes to our operations manuals, but not more than that. An annual risk review in September. All of our annual equipment calibrations were completed, and we are trying to better integrate the QMS into, and timelines into the management side as well as operations. Moving on to Alexandria. Alexandria is a large municipal residential drinking water system. Our permits and licenses are valid until 2026 and 2032. For the treatment, we take in the surface water from Mill Pond, use a coagulation, phylloculation, sedimentation treatment, followed by filtration, use chlorine disinfection, corrosion control, and monitoring. We also use chloramination to ensure that we have a stronger residual out in the distribution. We have the transmission main that goes out towards Maxville with chloramination boosting. Halfway through, there's two water towers, and one in Alexandria, one in Maxville, and we have backup generators at all of our facilities. We service about eighteen hundred services between Alexandria and Maxville. Our flow summary, so in Alexandria, we are only allowed to take 5,616 cubic meters per day from Mill Pond. On average, we took 200, 136 cubic meters, and our maximum flow was 3,238 cubic meters. This represents 38% of the system capacity, which is about an 8% increase from the previous year. On the treated side, our allowable limit is 8,014 cubic meters per day. Our average daily flow was 1945, and the max taking was 3,056 cubic meters, which is about 24% and an increase from about 5% of the previous year. There is an increase noting, noted in the, in the water flows. You can kind of see them starting between May and June to increase quite significantly. We do attribute that to quality flushing that we're doing out in the distribution, just to make sure that we're getting the water turnover that we need to see in maintaining our residuals. Our water loss, which is the bottom chart, it's about calculated out to about 62%. We believe that part of this is due to the way that we collect the data and some missing data that we don't actually see. This is significantly high for a drinking water system. We are looking into a water audit and different tracking methods to try to bring this number down or quantify where we're losing all of our water. On the sampling and analysis side, once again, there was very little change in the raw and treated water quality. We had no adverse sampling for our routine or quarterly samples. Our additional sampling, so we have to do organic and inorganic sampling once a year. There were no adverses reported this year. The lead program is once every three years, so similar to Glen Robertson, we had samples taken in March, which came back fine, and our next set should be in October. Hey, we also did fluoride and sodium testing last year, and our next set is in 2027. Significant expenses for Alexandria, so we had the Tobin Street relining project. It happened in two phases between June 29th and August 29th. We installed some new valves to ensure the phasing work would be completed, and all residents were placed on a temporary water line, and issued a boil water as a precaution. Proactive infrastructure replacement, which means it's an annual budget item. We replaced distribution valves and hydrants to ensure continual improvement. So valves were replaced on Bishop, Concierden, and Anick Street, as well as on Tobin. And there was one hydrant replaced in Maxville due to defect. Significant operational expenses, we had the filter water, water treatment plant, water filter channel repair. We had an intermittent leak between May and August. We had a few different consultants come through to try to determine and locate the repair. Once it was determined that it was in the filter channel, we were able to repair, and we haven't had any further issues. We had a backwash pump that failed during operation. It was removed and put back in service after repair within 36 days. The high lift pump VFD failure, so this is just a drive that talks between our pump and our SCADA system. For some reason, it didn't want to talk to the SCADA anymore, so we've, we've done multiple repairs, and it was working up until about January. There is no issue with the pump operation. We can run it in manual. It just won't run automatically through our SCADA system. We are waiting for a new VFD. There's minor SCADA communication issues, which were repaired on an ongoing basis. We don't seem to be having as many issues as we were, so we think we found the problem. We don't seem to be having as many issues as we were, so we think we found the problem. Equipment failures, so minor repair replacements of SCADA components, filter surface wash, automated valves. Treatment failures, we had some minor chemical dosing, but due to advanced warnings, there was no treatment issues. We were able to determine the issues before it got to a critical level. For unplanned work, we had five water main breaks and six service line repairs. All work was contracted out. There was a chemical spill on Mill Pond. We were contacted by the fire department in regards to this. It was a recreational user. The incident did happen downstream. As a precaution, we shut everything down for the night, made sure there was no potential risk to our water treatment source, and then we were able to start up the next morning without incident. And our sodium levels, we have noted that through the RRC, we were looking through some of their sample results, there are some fluctuating sodium levels in the fall to midwinter. When I reached out to RRC, they didn't know why this was happening. They didn't know the cause, and they weren't really looking into it, so they weren't really that concerned. And finally, on to the compliance. So the internal and external auditing are the same as Glen Robertson. It's completed as one system. On our ministry inspections, we were inspected in October. Once again, received 100% ranking. We have three AWQIs or adverse water quality reports that were filed. So two in regards to the water, water main relining project, and one in regards to a low chlorine residual. That was, as soon as it was found, it was flushed and restored within 10 minutes, so there was no additional issues with that one. We completed our 36-month risk assessment, our annual risk assessment, our annual calibrations, and once again, the integration of the QMS through the all systems. That's it for the drinking water systems.
Thank you. Angela, quick question, just the, I just want to understand the Glen Robertson one, where we had the sodium. If we, we were sampling that because of the five-year?
So it's a requirement in groundwater to sample once every 60 months. Yeah. So it's just a test done on the treated water.
So we wouldn't have caught it if it hadn't been in our, in the five-year rotation? Is that right?
Yeah, but we, we've tested positive for high sodium ever since I've been here. So it gets tested once every five years, and it's just a letter issued.
Okay, so that letter is just a blanket, ongoing, high sodium, so you're aware.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, the, the water loss, I noticed there's some hydrants have an automatic flush. I guess some at the extreme. I notice in Maxville anyway, there's a few of them. Is that where a lot of the water is getting?
So anywhere we have a hydrant flushers, generally because it's on a dead end or it's got a longer retention. So we have to make sure that our chlorine residuals are being stable. When they sit in the pipe for a long extended time, they start to kind of dissipate, so we have the flushers on it as a proactive.
But we know how much water it uses when it flushes?
Yeah, yeah.
That was a very, very well-done report, because I actually, you know, was able to understand it. So that's great. And now you're moving on to wastewater?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. What's that? I have the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay, they're all separate, sorry. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you very much. Go ahead, Angela. Oh, oh my goodness. Okay. We're to the annual wastewater system reports for Alexandria and Maxville. Counselor, go ahead.
For those who weren't listening. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Committee of the whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number PW 2023-13, annual wastewater systems report for Alexandria and Maxville for information purposes.
Thank you, Counselor. Now you can go.
So hello, my name is Angela. So this is the annual wastewater system report to council, so it's just for informational purposes. We'll be covering the Alexandria wastewater system and the Maxville wastewater system. So Alexandria is a Class II continuous discharge wastewater system. It's a separate sewer system, and receiving leachate from the Alexandria landfill, which is only a seasonal issue during the spring, during high flows. We're covered under ECA 9873 BQ 6 LRT, which is valid until 2026. This ECA was issued with the anticipation of the upgrades to the lagoon system. We're also under a Fisheries Act directive from 2019, which has to do with some adverse sampling that we were receiving under ice cover conditions, so we had some issues with a few parameters. They don't seem to be reoccurring, but the fisheries, the Environment Canada basically wants reassurance that we are going to do something to prevent it from reoccurring. And part of the issue was that we had said we were going to do the upgrades, and that was going to be the cover to fix. So the fact that it hasn't been done, we are waiting on a report from Environment Canada right now. They did visit us, I believe, January or February, so we haven't received anything from them since. And I believe we're also undergoing a pump need study through EVB. So our collection system is comprised of 25 kilometers of piping and force mains. There's about 1,585 service connections, three sanitary lift stations, and one main pumping station. Into the treatment lagoons, we have an aerated cell, followed by three faculatory treatment cells, which run in series. We have chemical treatment for phosphorus, disinfection, dechlorination, where we use sodium hypochlorite and sodium bisulfate before it goes off into the natural water course. The flow summary, so on the raw side, we brought in 1,162,810 cubic meters throughout 2022. This includes just over 3,500 cubic meters of leachate, which was hauled between May 2nd and May 20th. The capacity rating for Alexandria is 3237 cubic meters per day. We are currently at 98% of our rated capacity. As some of you may remember, although this is a scary number, it has come down because in previous years, we have been overrated capacity. So there has been a lot of work on the infiltration, which has brought our numbers down significantly. You do see the average daily flow is 3,184 cubic meters, with the highest flow of 17,077 cubic meters. Flows are significantly increased, or slightly, sorry. Flows are only slightly increased from 2021. You can see the significant flows were observed in March, April, and December. All of these times coincided with either major rain events, spring melts, or things of that nature. There was one overflow event, was caused by a partially blocked sewer and degraded manhole structure. The sewer was unblocked five days after the initial report, and we only discharged an approximate 494, 4 cubic meters, just under 5 cubic meters, which is a very small amount. The manhole was fixed in June, so we're not expecting any kind of recurrence. On the treated side, we treated 1,091,907 cubic meters. There were no issues noted with flows, or the treatment bypasses, or overflows during this year. Sampling and analysis. So the chart on the left just gives you a summary of our monthly and annual averages. The limits are listed up on the top, and the annual average is what we report down on the bottom. So all results were within the provincial and federal annual compliance limits for 2022. The quarterly sampling that was completed, which includes the lethality testing, there was no adverse results. And we had the annual monitoring wells, which was completed in March, so that's just the groundwater sampling. All results were comparable to previous findings. There may be some minor influence from total ammonia and organic nitrogen, but in order to quantify that, we would need further investigation, which at this point, I don't think is required, and we're not being requested to do so. Our treatment cell sledge volumes, so they were collected in November 11th, 2022. So you can see the bottom maps are just showing the areas where we do have a high sledge volume. Cell B is our, is our biggest issue, and that's what we're targeting, our sledge removal Operational issues. We had some minor pump issues, either due to equipment failure, debris in the system, or grease buildup. All issues were dealt with whenever the issues occurred, and any issue has been repaired. We had some minor communications failures through our SCADA, and then the Bell Line failure, which knocked out our alarm systems. Once any issue was found, it was resolved within 24 to 48 hours. On the treatment side, we had a some pump failure at the Alexandria lagoons. This caused a flood in our alum building and caused significant damage to our alum dosing system. All systems were repaired and back in, and back in service probably within two months, I would say. There was some major electrical work and other components that also had to be repaired. We had to reset the tank, because our tank actually floated, and it damaged all the pipes. We have put in some, some alarms and other system, backup systems, to try to prevent this from reoccurring. On the treatment side, we also had a, on our aerators, one of the plates unfortunately became loose, and the fasteners fell off, and it fell into the aeration cell. There was no damage to the aerator itself, we just lost the plate. We have replaced it and re, and secured it properly. And some minor utility failures. We did notice an increase in bird strikes on the, on the power lines, which is the geese coming in and out. Unfortunately, that does blower, it blows the power, and then we have to get hydro in to repair, because it blows right out the bank. Our sledge removal project, so Bishop Water was contracted through a multi-phase contract to remove and process the sledge into geo tubes. The geo tubes were installed in 2021 after decommissioning of our previous geo tubes and creating a new area on the lagoon site. So they were on site from May 12th, May 2nd to May 12th, and removed an approximate volume of 3,700 cubic meters from Cell B. Any water that was processed during this time was returned back to the lagoons for treatment. Now on to Maxville. So Maxville is a Class I seasonal discharge. It is a separate sewer system, and the current ECA is valid until it's amended or revoked. We have 13 kilometers of collection piping and force mains, 450 service connections, one sanitary lift station, and one main pumping station. At the treatment side, there's two faculatory treatment cells, which run in parallel with chemical treatment for phosphorus, and seasonal discharge, which coincides with the, the spring peak flows in the Scotch River. Our flow summary. So on our raw metered influence, we brought in 143,615 cubic meters. We have a rated capacity of 450 cubic meters per day, and we are currently at 80%, 88% of the rated capacity. So our average day, we were treating, we were bringing in 394 cubic meters, and on our highest day, it was 1,129 cubic meters. Similar to Alexandria, the flows were only slightly increased from 2021, and any significant flow dates were noticed in March, April, and December, which coincided with rain events and snow melts. There was no bypasses. On the treated water side, in 2022, we released 181,614 cubic meters. The spring discharge was completed over 17 days between March 28th and April 13th, and there was no issues at this time that were noted. Sampling and analysis. So on the treated water, which is the spring discharge, we sampled six times, just to ensure that we were meeting the requirements within our ECA. We discharged from both cells, and all results were well within the provincial and federal limits. We have a contracted groundwater monitoring, which is contracted out to JP 2G Consultants in association with Greer Galloway. This includes groundwater, which is sampled in May and October, and surface water, which is sampled May, August, and October. All results indicate there was some minor impacts on the groundwater. However, all the results were well below the reportable limits. And as per the report, there are actually no potable wells within, I believe it's 500 meters downstream from our lagoons, so there's no impact to any, any residents within the area. There was no, the report also indicated that there was no impact on the surface water noted whatsoever. Once again, the sledge volume, so we were monitoring the sledge in November 2022. There's some, all results were within the normal ranges, and our only areas where we had elevated sledge was just near the outfalls. The chart beside it will show you the lagoon levels that we monitor, so the beginning of the year, and then you'll see the discharge portion where we drop right down, and then this low steady increase throughout the year. So operational issues in the collection system, minor pump operation issues. Station guide rails, they were damaged during pump removal. They were repaired right away, and we are budgeting to look into replacement. Our generator at the Manor Station did have some operational issues, and we had to bring in gen rep for repair. It has been repaired, and we haven't had any significant issues since then. On the treatment side, cell level monitoring, so in September, so if I go back to this one, you can kind of notice where the two lines separate. We believe there is a blockage in the interconnecting piping. It won't affect treatment or any other process. It just means that the cells are not coming up at the same rate as they normally would. So we're looking into, we're not at any risk right now, we're well below our, below our warning triggers. So we're just monitoring to see how high our levels are coming, and if we have to do something before we do the discharge. But we are planning on removing the blockage once after the discharge. Some damage to the entry gate, and there was some minor hydrogen sulfide odors and foaming on the discharge, none of which was noted when it went into the natural water course. It was just noted at the outfall. That is, that's it for that.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilman.
The capacity level, the 98% in Alexandria and 88% in, that's basically because of the size of the lagoons?
So it's, it's, so the capacity rating is based on what the lagoons were initially designed to handle, so it's the inflow side and not the outflow side. So it's basically the treatment processes and the size of the lagoons, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Councilman.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I know what it's like. Good reports.
Thank you.
Yes, those were really good reports. Thank you very much, Angela, for that.
Tried to keep it simple this year.
No, it was, it was very well done. Thank you. So I'll call the question, all in favor of the motion? Carried, great. Thanks again. All right. Tim, you'll be up in a minute. Blue box transition and regional waste management group update. Counselor Martin.
Moved by myself. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Committee of the whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives report PW 2023-07, blue box transition and regional waste management group update, and that the Committee of the whole for the Township of North Glengarry recommends the council to opt out of the providing administrative services to Circular Materials Ontario during the transition period of January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025, and report this to the regional waste management group.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I'll try and be brief. So I'll summarize the regional waste management, what we went through first. So we've actually met twice, this is a summary from the first meeting, which will, and the second meeting will be coming, it was fairly recent, but we've, we discussed 10 joint tender opportunities, we discussed, thank you, Jenna, I forgot to put my thing on. We discussed the blue box transition, hazardous waste products, and whether we've been opting in and opting out, so that's what the meat of this presentation is about, is about the blue box transition, and if we're opting out of the transition, and making sure everyone's up to date with what the actual purpose of the, the move to producer responsibility is. So we'll go through that in a moment. One of the interesting things that came out of this was that we all unanimously decided that we should invite the City of the City of Cornwall into the meetings as well, which they accepted, and they were at the second meeting. And we made some progress there as well. So I'll bring that, we try and actually all take the report at the same time for the update, so everyone has the same information. So that'll come out in a few weeks. But that's, the main thing is that the City of Cornwall was there. Okay, so I'll go into Blue Box. So this has been something that's been on the works for a long, long time, and it's essentially moving from the Blue Box program to producer responsibility. So the, I like to kind of go back and kind of think about what really is, from a high level, if you're looking from the point of view of the, of the province, what is producer responsibility, and why are they even trying to go and do all this? The best example I can think of is actually Acid Rain. If anybody who lived through the 90s, they'd be familiar with Acid Rain. And if you ask, say Zoe, she doesn't really know much about it because she grew up after the 90s, right? So this is a photo of annual wet sulfate deposition through the United States. And this is in recent years, and this is in 1989 to 1991. So this is a good example of producer responsibility. In this timeframe, coal plants and coal companies were producing, they weren't responsible for the pollution that they were creating. They were creating their product, they were creating energy, but they weren't responsible for that environmental damage, and that cost was really borne by the people, right? And the environment that lived there. So this is actually, why you don't hear about Acid Rain anymore is because of producer responsibility. We went in, we fixed it, and it isn't really a problem anymore. Coal plants were made to install post, post combustion systems like palladium induced to make sure that we get rid of these contaminants, and actually really solved the problem of Acid Rain. So, and that does increase the cost of the product, and that's why really, we're kind of seeing the move to new greener energy that we've seen over the last few years. So that's really, at a high level, what this is about. And then we can kind of dig into the nitty gritty of why it's good, why it's bad, and how it affects us. So we're moving from the model on the left to the model on the right. So the big difference is that yellow arrow that moves back the other way. So this is how it used to be. And the producers pay us a certain amount of money, about 50% of what it costs to actually recycle the materials. And we are, where it says local, you can't really see the government, but that says local government there on the left, that's us. And we're really bearing that cost, and we get a little bit of money from the, from the producers. So I'll go quickly through the legislative framework. I'll go really quickly through this. So this is the history. We have the EPA that actually came in. So the EPA is what first made us have to go and made municipalities start have to recycle instead of just doing garbage. Then we went to the Waste Diversion Act, which is where producers started giving us money for 50% of the money to actually start, for doing this recycling. And then we went to the Waste Free Ontario Act, which is what we're going through right now, which should move it to full producer responsibility. Whether it's actually if you, full producer responsibility is, I'll get into at the end. But these are little explanations. You don't really have to read it. It's, that one there is just about the transition, which we'll talk about a little bit as well. And that's the final regulation, which will mean that producers are responsible. That's just a little bit of a summary for it. That's a nice little graphic. So we're moving from on the left, full municipal responsibility. We're currently at shared responsibility. This is where they give us a bit of money, and then we'll move to full producer responsibility after the act, which I maybe don't agree with that it's full producer responsibility, but we'll get into that. So this is just another little graphic that says the same thing. Some of the organizations who are involved. So the Stewardship Ontario will essentially go away in all effective, for all facts and purposes. RIPRA will still be around. They're the regulatory authority, and they will, they're supposed to be the ones who make sure that the producers stay on track. That word there, the pro, the pro is a word for a company who is going and taking care of this for producers. So Coca-Cola and Kraft and those sort of people, they hire a pro to go and manage this for them. So I'll skip through this. You can look through it in more detail if you want, but it's essentially about reporting and who the producers are. It essentially just breaks down who's responsible for what. There's a few terms that are very important. So eligible community, any municipality, and there's also First Nations and northern communities that are eligible. Eligible sources is something that's very, very important to keep your ear out for because that's where they're gonna get us. So, and there, there's a lot of eligible communities, eligible sources that get thrown around. So you've got to watch out for that because people will say, oh, all eligible communities will be picked up, but not all eligible, not all sources within that community are eligible. So something to look out for. So the transition period, July 2023 is when it starts in Toronto and some of the surrounding areas there. So we'll be keeping a keen eye out to see what happens. We're very glad we're not going first. Pardon me. And so in 2026, it should be full responsibility. 2025 is going to be a transition period, and we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. So this is just a further breakdown of the producers and producer organizations, the pros. Producers are people like Costco, Metro, Coca-Cola, PepsiCo, all these guys. They are going with circular materials. There are other pros out there as well. Re-Rise Solutions and the Canadian Beverage Container Recycling Association, which is very interesting, those guys, because they're looking at some extra things above and beyond that you can ask me about later if you're interested. So we are sharing, we have to share critical, critical information with these guys to make sure that they can make the transmission smooth, which we have been doing. There's another report that we have to submit coming up in August. And one of the major things that we have to think about is whether we're going to participate in the transition period. So that's basically the year of 2025 for us, and I'll get more into that. So this is more about how the pros have to do this. This is, I think this is important that we go through so that we understand when residents are asking you, okay, if they know about this, if this is going to change, what's actually going to happen with my materials? Essentially, they're going to collect it all, and they're going to send it all to giant MRFs, Material Recycling Facilities, a lot more complex and advanced than the facility that we have here at RARE. It's also going to be a lot easier for them because the federal government banned single-use plastics. So it's, it's a little bit irritating because if we had had a single-use plastics banned for the period that we were running RARE, it would be a lot easier of a job for us. So it's kind of the, the job's getting a lot easier, and we're giving it to the private sector. So we're a little bit sour on that, but it is what it is. It's good that they're banning them anyway. There's going to be a lot of trucking involved. They're going to truck them around to very large facilities, and they're talking about, you know, electronic scanning devices that are going to scan the stuff as it runs through a belt and automatically salt them, which is good. So now we're getting to the meat, which is the decisions for council and how it affects us. So I'm recommending that we opt out of any transition agreements with CMO. Pretty much every other one of the six has opted out. It really means that you end up playing by CMO's rules, and it exposes us to a lot of risk. There have been back and forths between CMO and the Association of Municipalities to try and get more equitable agreements. However, it's, I still don't think that they're up to, up to scratch. It'd be interesting to see, to see what happens in Toronto. I don't really think that we should be helping out the producers to try and, try and do this job for them. You know, and it's just going to get too muddled. We're really going to be blamed. Especially, we don't actually run any collection facilities, sorry, any collection resources ourselves apart from the MRF. We don't actually drive around our own trucks and pick up materials. So there's not really a, much incentive for us to actually do that. Pretty much every municipality is opting out as well. They're very happy because it means the ones that do run their own trucks are able to go from mixed-use trucks to single trucks for just picking up garbage, which is a lot more effective for them because CMO is going to have to bring around their own, their own trucks. So they are responsible for everything. So promotion and education, collection, consolidation, and processing. So the whole kit and caboodle, educating the residents, all the notifications, we really don't have to worry about anything except making sure we're providing the information moving up to transition. So we can opt in. I recommend we opt out. So we can do collection, we can do promotion and education. Don't recommend we do any of that. We can also do the consolidation, consolidation and processing. So we have actually already opted out of that. That was a report early in April of 2022. So we really don't want to be in that business. We, there's also several RFPs that you can apply for. That's what that is there. It's really not something that we're very interested in, but if, I think it's relevant to just bring it up, to know it's there. Sure.
So the, the, sorry, my apologies.
Go ahead.
The opting out of this, these are blanket agreements with CMO. And you're suggesting this based on the language of the agreements? So I'm just curious if, if there's any opportunity for us to observe any of these coming into play, if anybody has opted in versus those who have opted out, to just see how it actually comes through? If we have that opportunity to observe, or if our drop dead date on this is before we would have the chance to observe?
Through you, Deputy Matt? Yes, so I would say that we would want to take a stance now just for the purpose of the Regional Waste Management Group. But up until, our transition date is not until January 1st, 2025. So we could still have an opportunity to go back on that right now. But for the Regional Waste Management Group purposes, it's a lot better to at least indicate our preference. If CMO comes out with something else that is beneficial to us, we will for sure be taking that from the committee back to council. But at the moment, there doesn't really seem to be any benefit to us. So that's the, that's the RFPs. So they're, during transition, the main benefit is if we had a, let's say we ran all this, you know, we had all this infrastructure and equipment ourselves. We wanted to use it, and some townships are in that position. Then they, you wouldn't have to bid on that first year to actually provide services to the pros. You would, you would just get it. But after that transition period, it's a competitive bidding process. So just to be aware. And, and that's essentially, if questions come up about RARE and why we'd not proceed with that, it's really because we can't compete. There's, we could help out for that year, that transition period, if we really wanted to. However, we don't really see the benefit, and we won't be able to compete in a competitive procurement because we're not a big enough facility. We're really just, you know, the, the size of these MRFs are going to be for several upper-tier municipality-sized areas combined. So not something really that we can handle. So this is the very interesting part that would be worth talking to levels of the provincial government about, and that is eligible sources. So if you go back to my analogy of Acid Rain, if you think that we're still going to let Acid Rain fall on some ineligible sources, it doesn't really work. The idea behind this is that the producers need to be fully responsible. However, they're saying that there are ineligible sources, which essentially goes to, I'll flick across to that side, to that slide. I'll go back to these. Non-eligible sources. So this building, industrial commercial spaces, not-for-profit organizations, daycares, places of worship, campgrounds, commercial farms. So those places won't have an option. They would either have to go and get a private agreement with an MRF somewhere, in a collection facility somewhere, or they would have to put it in the garbage, right? So when it comes to responsibility, to me, I'd say we're letting some acid rain through the cracks. Like, this isn't full responsibility. So we're fairly disappointed to see that they're not responsible for collecting them from everywhere. A lot of other townships do a lot more than, do a lot more than North Glengarry when it comes to picking up recycled materials from businesses. They come and collect entire, entire dumpsters of different materials, which is probably taking it a little bit too far. But having those, having those local services available is going to be a big issue going forward. So at the moment, a lot of these commercial businesses take their materials to RARE. And they, you know, they have a, they have a contract essentially to take them from, you know, they'll, they'll contract with a private collection company, and that collection company will pick it up from their business and take it to RARE, and then we'll, we'll process it. So this is going to be a big problem, and it'll be very interesting to see what happens in Toronto. So I'll just go back to these so everyone can see it because there's some others, there's some interesting things in here. So eligible sources, seasonal, pretty much everything residential. Specified public spaces is a good one. I'm glad this got included in there. We still, Anne and I still need to go and look through the regulation specifically to see how many bins we're going to get. But it's based on population. So, but they are obligated to provide bins in public spaces. So the, the main park and those sorts of places will get a collection bin. There is also specified retirement homes. This is also something that we need to look into to see which areas around would actually be included in this. Long tech, long care, sorry, long-term care homes. This slide should be inside the council package as well. So there are two links at the bottom. Those are the two regs that we just really need to look through and figure out what's going on. That's a small summary of the population for the parks, the formula there. So depending, so we're, we're within the 5,000 to 29,000, you know, 30,000 population limit. So that would be where our, how many bins we get. However, does that mean they provide that many bins for North Glengarry? Or does it mean they provide that many bins per park in North Glengarry? We don't know. So that's an interesting one. But we have a bit of time to work it out. So the Canadian Beverage Container Recycling Association, this is quite interesting. They're looking at providing bins over and above what's there already. It's probably, I'm, I get the sense, this is wild conjecture, but there is, I have seen collection facilities where, with sort of refunds and that sort of thing, and donations, which is great. So what these guys are doing is very interesting. That's the Canadian Beverage Container Recycling Association. And then we went through non-eligible sources. That's a big concern.
Yes, just a question about that. What is the rationale for not including those?
I have no idea. I wish I knew.
So there isn't one, then?
Yes. Yes, probably lobbying, but that's, that would be my guess. So this is a good example. So we have been very, very careful to make sure that we're identifying that we have mixed uses downtown of our, our towns and villages. So if you look at that top graphic, we have residential areas above and we have businesses below. Businesses are non-eligible, but the residents above are. So we've been very careful to identify that in our data. So that's just an interesting example. So yeah, pros are not, are not responsible to service these sources. I think this is a big hole in the, in the regulation. Service standards, so the, this is actually really good. So the service standards are if you're getting pickup right now, nothing should change. For a resident, they really shouldn't notice any difference apart from they'd have a, on their flyer, they'd have a CMO or a Ripra little logo instead of a North Glengarry logo. But essentially, you still put it on the curb. They still come and pick it up. What is even better than that is that more materials, I'm going to skip through this. It's mostly the same for everything. This is just the service standards, facilities, public spaces, designated materials. So the very, very nice thing about this regulation is you get an across Ontario standard for what is recyclable and what isn't. And it really increases what is recyclable. North Glengarry does very, very well for what we accept. We accept even the Tetrapacks, which a lot of, a lot of places don't bother recycling, but we go to the effort and get it done because it's better for our environment. So that is going to be very, very nice. Each material is assigned a, assigned a category that you can see there. So it gets very, very simple. And with the more, with the greater amount of product and these more advanced MRF facilities, they should be able to divert more out of, get more recycling out of materials. So, you know, we go from various from by community to consistent across the province. So our transition date is really the end one. So December 31st, 2025 is when we're at full producer responsibility. It actually happens a little bit before that for us. It's January 1st. It's just that transition date in 2025. Because we're opting out effectively, or since we currently have the intention to opt out, producers will have full responsibility as of January 1st, 2025. There, the province is setting a lot of targets as well. Interesting to note that this is not codified within the regulation. So this is an interim law, but this is something that they've gone and said. So it's something that we should really hold them to. This is just how they calculate it. And then we'll go and look into the timeline. So we did, that was when the regulation came in. We, the transition period for us is that 2025 transition period. So in July, that's when Toronto starts that transition period. So depending on who is opted in and who is opted out, we'll see, we'll see from there how that actually goes. So they'll have a full year of, you know, from, or they'll have a half a year of full producer responsibility before they get to us. So from 2024 July to 2025. So there's just some reporting that we have to do. This is just a very clear for what our transition date is. This is some of the reporting we've had to do. So we've done, we already did an initial report in August of 2023. This is our upcoming transition report where we need to provide some more data. So we have a collection contract that expires of July this year. So you'll see a, some reports coming in the near future. We need to renew our garbage collection contract. It was previously on a six-year timeline. Traditionally, they're more on a three-year with a option to extend. We also have a, a, like a blue box collection agreement. So that we'll be putting out as well, and that'll just be for the two years up until 2025. And then it won't be our issue anymore. And this is just, we want to register as a processor. We already said we don't want to do that. That was our, my report in April 1st, 2022. And the rest is just a little bit of a glossary for, for terms. So this should be on your package as well. If you want to go back and look through it, it's, I find it's a good presentation that really breaks things down.
Excellent. Thank you for that. That was very comprehensive. And I think maybe I finally have a little bit of understanding of how this is actually going to work. It's, it's, it's all been very kind of not clear up until now. Questions, comments? Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Sorry, Tim, we keep years in there several times. But they start 2023 this year, transitioning, do they not? Toronto starts this year?
Yes.
Not next year, this year?
This year.
So they should have a year and a half before they get to us?
Yes, although they, some of them may have opted in to help CMO during the transition.
Okay.
Which may, you know, they're more likely to because being a bigger city, they're more, the, the consequences are a lot more severe if they, if something goes wrong and garbage starts piling up on the streets.
Yeah.
We're a rural community, so it's, you know, there's not as intense a population density. So it wouldn't be as, as, that consequence isn't as critical for us. It would be a matter of getting a contractor, get it, going around fixing it up and then backcharging the CMO.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? What does, Tim, what does this mean for, for Rare and our plans? Like, because we need to plan for what eventually is going to happen with, you know, the facility, the equipment and all of that stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. So Rare is still going to be valuable for us after transition. I'll bring a full report about it. I tried to bring as much as I could last year as well. But there's some, some things I didn't cover, such as our hazardous waste days that we, that we do. We've got an ECA assigned to it, so there are some decisions that we need to, that need to be made. However, there's also the issue of the commercial waste. So there is some services that we could offer, such as the cardboard recycling that requires very little equipment. And we've also, we've started using Rare to store some public works materials. So trailers and that sort of stuff to keep them out of the snow for some spare space that we've been using there as well. So, but really, if we decide that we want to, we, we can't run it as, well, it, it is definitely council's position, decision. But we, I do not recommend that we try and run Rare as a, as a pro MRF. It's just the technology and the investment required would not be, would not be feasible for us. So if it came down that we actually want to sell the entire building, then we'd put out an RFP close to the end of 2024. And, because we'd really want to keep an eye on what actually happens with these other communities as they transition as well. Because if that date is extended and we don't have an MRF for, you know, six months to eight months of the year, that could be disastrous for us as well. And could, we could end up with a lot of materials in landfill.
Right, thank you for that. Okay, is there anything else? That was a great report.
Thank you.
You've heard the question, all in favor? Okay, carried. Thank you very much. And thank you again. Matt, you're up. So we have the training facility rental. Councillor Madden?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley. The committee of the whole township of North Glengarry receives staff report number FD 2023-03 recommending the rental of our facility to external stakeholders and outside fire departments through a cost recovery model.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As council is aware, the fire department operates a training facility within our township located near Apple Hill. This facility has, has grown through expansion and has been a very, a very valuable asset to not only our department in, in terms of growing. Since the, the closure of the Interior Fire College and the new legislation required across interior for firefighters, this has put a large emphasis on the skill sets required, which actually requires live fire training, which can only be completed at training facilities. This has brought it an excellent opportunity for our township to, to grow and to offer additional, our facility to outside stakeholders, fire departments. Staff is basically, we're recommending that we open up the doors to outside departments where we've developed a fee structure and rental agreements put in place. We've been utilizing the facility. We've opened since, since 2021. And we see that is, we continue to grow. We offer various different aspects, such as a multi, multi-level complex, live burn, Class A, live burn containers, as well as a new dragger, car fire and LPG props. So, and we continue to grow and expand. So through the cost recovery model, this is going to allow us to, you know, benefit and continue to modernize and grow our own training facility for our firefighters, as well as for the townships surrounding us to, that don't have the ability to meet those standards that, at least within our community, that we can provide that for outside agencies and we're able to benefit through that. In terms of any financial implications, we're, this is a, based on a cost recovery model, we will see a potentially additional administrative requirements just for the processing of applications and participants and so forth. So in terms of that, we're hopeful that once we have a fee and charges structured accordingly, that we'll have an influx of fire departments that are interested. We're hoping to open this up and have some marketing, you know, tools put in place where other municipalities could come and visit the facility beforehand. And then this can show some interest and so forth. So that's what the, the future is kind of like for our facility. So that's what we're looking for, council, is just the approval to move forward in terms of, to open up the doors to, to the opportunities to rental, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that report. Councillor Massey, then councillor Madden.
Thanks, Matt. I think we, when we were having our discussion, the strategic meeting two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, we had mentioned that, that issue. And then you got on right away, so thank you for that. On your cost recovery, is this cost recovery for the day like the time of the firemen? Or is there a chance that the township will actually get money back that we invested in this facility?
So based on the proposed rates and fees, which will be incorporated into our fees and charges by law, the fees that are imposed, yes, there is, we're going to be recovering some costs because we've already put the upfront cost to it. We were benefiting ourselves for our fire, our own fire department, right? So the benefits are already there. Anything that we're going to be recovering is going to be based on either market value for, such as the use of propane. That's just going to be a charge back. And, but any types of, anything that we've put forward, we're going to be utilizing. So any benefit is going to be basically upfront cost for, not cost, but revenue for our township.
Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Chief, you and I have talked about this a couple of times, so thank you. I'm very pleased to see this. And I, I mean, based, looking at the fees, I think it's pretty reasonable for other municipalities, other departments. I don't know where else they'd be able to get this kind of experience, and especially for the kind of prices that are being recommended. So I think great for us, and I think fantastic for the entire area, that everybody can benefit from what's been done. And just to follow on councillor Massey, the, the pricing, if we can get some of that money back that's gone into this, obviously for some of it to go in and keep improving it. But, you know, maybe some of it to go to the new tankers and stuff too, I'm just saying.
There's a thought. Other questions and comments?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I've, I've talked to some of the local firefighters and they're really impressed with, with that system you got, the setup you have there. And it sounds like they're coming back out of that with a lot of confidence, with their, with their abilities to fight fires and, and do rescues and stuff. So I think it's going to be only a big plus to get that out there, market it out there to other. Perfectly, 100%.
Excellent. Anyone else? Yeah, well, kudos to staff. Boy, the whole works here, all thinking outside of the box here. It's been a good meeting. Okay, so you've heard the question, all in favor, the motion? And that's carried, none opposed. Okay, great. So now we move on to the consent agenda. This is a little different than in the past. The directors would present their report. That's not going to be happening because we're already two hours into this meeting. I'm assuming you've read them all. Does anybody have any? Well, we'll put it on the table first. Councillor Martin, please. You don't have one? A motion?
Oh, sorry.
The motion for the consent agenda?
A little confused there. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the committee for the whole, of the whole for the township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Thank you, councillor. So any questions for any of the directors on the, the four departments? Nothing? Look at you guys are getting off easy. Holy moly. It's early in the year. Okay, well, thank you for your work on that anyway. All in favor of the motion? Carried, none opposed. Thank you. No one finished business. Other business, councillor Martin brought this up. The issue of speeding in Maxville. It can be, I don't know whether we want to just talk about it as, as a more sort of global issue because we have these problems elsewhere as well, but go, go ahead councillor Martin.
Yeah, I, I didn't really know how far I can go on this, but it was a situation that came up several times during my campaigning. And whether it's to reduce speeds or signage, put up signage. I know we've had, in the past, not lately, but in the past, we've had OPP in town doing the radar thing. But that works just while they're in town. They don't really recognize a problem because word gets out, hey, watch it, there's OPP in town. Everybody, of course, slows down. So I don't know what, what the solutions would be. I just kind of hopefully as a collective, we can come up with. Do we have to make bylaws as far as reducing speeds? And we have the, we have the school right in Maxville. I can see the backyard right from my front, my front door. So on Main Street right there, we're less than 100 yards from a school. To reduce the speed to 40 clicks up Main Street wouldn't be, wouldn't be too far out of, far fetched an idea as far as enforcing it. To let her back to my constituent, basically I told her it's, we can't really make people, if they decide they're going to speed through town, it's up to them. So unless we can come up with a, a penalty system, you know, actually have police either stopping people and, and major warnings or issuing tickets. I don't know. Any other solution?
Well, I think Tim has some ideas. And, and some of this is kind of wrapped up in, in, you know, what councillor Manley was talking about earlier, which is, you know, we have some questions about speed limits on roads across the township. And I'm sure everyone would say that in every hamlet, everyone goes too fast. Down Main Street, they go too fast. So I think, you know, point well taken, but I think we need to probably look at this a little broader. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So there's sort of two, two parts to my comments on this. And the first one is a short-term solution. So what we can do in the short term is if councillors notice a, a particular issue and we want to kind of jump on that straight away, each of the, all the councillors will be getting an email this week for our kind of new system that I've of new system that I've been talking about, about our special projects team. One of the things that we can do is go and put up our traffic speed, so they're, they're an active sensor that detects the speed of the oncoming car, does a little flashing light and tells them what speed that they're going. The reason those are effective is because when people are driving, they're using their passive brain. When you're, when you're driving along, there are only about 1% of drivers who actually pay attention with their full focus and make sure that they're going exactly, following all the rules they're supposed to be following, and those people are called race car drivers. For everyone else, we, you, you wouldn't be able to drive with your, all of your active attention, because it would be too exhausting. Everyone has it relegated to a, a secondary part of their brain, which is, you know, controlled by habit and motion and that sort of thing. So there's a new, new school of thinking that has really come around in the last 20 years, which is that we need to design our roads for their purpose. And as part of the greater plan, as part of our strategic planning, I'll be asking council to have a look at some of the roads that we have and really decide on what their use are. Is the speed appropriate? Is the neighboring land use appropriate, or the other way around? Is a road appropriate to that land use? And then we want to really look at the design of those roads to see, are we sending the right message to drivers to, is this somewhere where they need to be paying attention, and they need to actually slow down, right? So, for example, one of the major design issues throughout Ontario is that county roads generally go through small hamlets and townships, and county roads are meant for moving large amounts of traffic at high speeds. So you've still got that county road standard as you move through Main Street, right? Generally, if you want people to slow down, you need to do some things like artificially narrowing the road. So some, a lot of, you've seen them a lot of time, those are kind of plastic pieces that we drill into the road, and they're little flags that stick up. What that actually does is it gives you this effect as you're moving past some of something moving really quickly through your peripheral vision, which gives you the sense that you're moving really fast. If you're on a proper county road, and you have that huge clear zone on the side, it actually feels like you can go fast, because there's nothing close to you. You know, objects that are farther away tend to be smaller and, and move slower as you, as you move through. So that's a big part of our roads, I'm sorry, I can't remember what we called it, roads needs plan, master plan, thank you. Transportation master plan, thank you. But that's part of it. But in the short term, we can install these signs. They're already proven, proven to be very effective. We can install more permanent traffic calming solutions. You don't need a environmental compliance approval or anything like that. They are an exemption. And that, and it's varying, it's encouraged a lot, especially around schools and, and places like this. We're also wanting to incorporate that into the Main Street redesign that we're doing with the counties. So I, I think that's probably a good overall plan, is we'll, in the coming months, we'll see, we'll be asking council to really look at the road network, providing information and, and asking council to make decisions on how these roads, do, do we think that the road use that we have for it right now is appropriate? Is that what we want? Do we think the, the speeds are appropriate? And, and sort of making a master plan decision from there. But if, in the short term, because speeding is an issue that affects us right now, please, we know about, I'll, I'll contact you about Maxville Main Street, and we'll go and put up one of those speed signs. I'm sure there's a technical name for it that I'm not using. And, and if anybody else has a similar issue, you'll get an email this week about the special projects team, so anything like that. Please input it through there, because it lets us stack up the work for our, for our workers. So essentially, we, we gather those up, and we put a work plan together for an entire week to keep those guys busy. And then we triage them as they come in. So if there's something that's very, very urgent, we'll push that to the top of the line. It's not going to the public yet. It's just going to councillors and, and senior staff to make sure that we have all the kinks worked out of the system. And then eventually it'll go live on the website, so residents will be able to input their own issues, which we'll triage and, and get to, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does that, councillor Martin, does that satisfy the, the issue temporarily?
Well, oh yeah, for sure, temporarily. Other, other things I've seen in going through some small hamlets and villages, is actually seeing the, the speed limit mark right on, right on the road, 50 kilometers or whatever, or school zone. I've also seen signs for community safety zones. Like, this one email I got is basically worried about people going in and out of the manor, mostly elderly drivers. And so, I mean, so just stuff like that. It's cheap for, I don't know how much we're going to pay in road paint to put a little sign on the road, but it just, like, it's a visual. Like you said, it's people seeing this, and, and in most cases, it'll be something new and they can see it.
Yeah.
Just to add clarity, that's absolutely, completely agree, and that's what we mean by traffic calming, traffic calming measures. All of those, all those little initiatives can really make a big difference, as opposed to, quite often, people move to, I need a policeman there with a radar gun who's going to pull people over and ticket them. Research has shown time and time again, it doesn't work as soon as a policeman leaves.
And those radar guns, or not radar guns, I'm sorry, those digital signs really do work. We've, we've, they've been around the municipality, and they, so, so that's great.
I only have one other issue is, at the north end of Mechanic Street, where we're going to be putting the Habitat for Humanity house. As you come off of Highland Road, when they come off that little exit there, it's, they just zoom in off Highland Road and right down Mechanic Street. And I've had a request, maybe we could put a yield sign or a stop sign, I don't think would be very effective, especially at Highland Games weekend, but a yield sign was certainly, maybe slow people down as they come in.
Yep, okay, good, good. All right, thanks for that. We'll, we'll move on to matters arriving, arising from standing committees. Councillor Massey, do you have anything on the raison region conservation authority?
Yeah, just, we had a meeting last week, and the big thing is the upcoming 50th anniversary of the Raisin River Canoe Race, April 15, and it's on the Saturday, not the Sunday. Yeah, so, and then invite anybody to go on the Raisin River website. There's a lot of programs for, for trees and stuff like that, and a lot of different workshops, free workshops, so that's it.
Thank you. Councillor, Maxville Manor update, councillor Martin?
Unfortunately, the Maxville Manor had their own bylaws come across, and I wasn't able, I had to be approved to go on to the Maxville Manor in their February meeting. So our first meeting was supposed to be tomorrow, which I got a notification that there's no real pressing business right now, so they postponed it to the next meeting in May. So I haven't got a report from the manor.
Okay.
Unfortunately, and the next report from the Glengarry Pioneer Museum, same kind of situation. I got, I did receive, two days before the, their last meeting, I received an email, but it went to my junk, and I never got it until the actual day of the meeting, and I missed, I missed my first meeting. So our next meeting is going to be following our, on April 12th, on our, following our next council meeting on the 11th, so.
Very good, thank you. Glengarry Archives, councillor Madden?
Thank you, deputy mayor. We had our first meeting on the 8th of March. Some housekeeping items, a little bit of get to know you for the new members. There's been a significant cache of files that came down from the Ontario Archives that Alan was very pleased with. Found some, some of the stuff that he really loves to go through is in there. Basically, they, he continues to accept collections, donations from individuals, whether it's estates or individuals who wish to make sure that they get there in an appropriate time. He's always there to, to discuss and negotiate, I guess.
Whatever that means. Okay, thank you for that. Arts, culture and heritage, councillor Manley?
So the last meeting, the Arts, Culture and Heritage, we looked at community grants, and we revised the community grants, which council has seen, or whatever, it came to council, or whatever. Our next meeting in April, first part of April, we'll be looking at the CIP, Community Improvement Plan, and looking at, sort of going through that document, and that's a fairly large document, so spending some time going through and seeing if there's things that we need to, to look at in that, in that document. So that's where we're at with Arts, Culture and Heritage.
Thank you for that. With regards to county council, you'll be interested to know that council members were very eager to get the education committee back up and running. The, and, and it will be able to appoint lay members onto that committee, which is good. So out of the six municipalities, those municipalities will be able to decide who they want to appoint on that committee, and we need to hit the ground running, because there's been a, a request to remove the moratorium on school closures, which could very much affect us here in North Glengarry in a negative fashion. So the, the good news is, that committee will be able to work in concert with our community development committee here, and hopefully we'll be able to have a real impact. Just two other quick notes. I got appointed, officially appointed, on the Roma Board and on the Eastern Ontario Regional Network Board through county's council. So that was, that's going to be very interesting work for me, and I'll hopefully be able to lobby on behalf of our region here and, and bring some good work out of that. So on to Friends of the Trails, councillor Manley.
I was unable to attend the, the previous meeting that was held last week. I do know from the previous meeting, prior to that, they wanted to, to thank council for, and the township for their support of the trails. It seems anytime that they need something, they, they felt that the township was there for them and helping them out. And they're moving on a, a plan to have a look at the, the land surrounding the, the trail that is on Lake Shore Road, and just to make sure that, right now, it's, most of it is township land, but just to make sure that it's sort of protected for, for future generations to use those, that trail system. So they're working with, through the counties, they'll be meeting, doing a Zoom meeting with the counties next week, with Peter from the counties next week to talk about.
Excellent. Thank you for that, councillor Manley. No report from the community development committee. Is there any report from the rural affairs committee? Meeting next week? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone, for your reports. No notice of motion. The next meeting is Wednesday, June the 21st, 3:00 PM. And if there's nothing else, I, I just, I, Sarah, I want to thank you, you know, I think the rejig on the committee of the whole, you've, you've made some good changes, and it's really allowed for some good discussion, so thanks for that. And if there's nothing else, adjournment, councillor Massey.
Thank you. Ms. Deputy Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley. There be no further business. The discussion meeting was adjourned at 5:20.
Very good. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. Carried. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, staff. Thank you to people watching, and have a good rest of the day, everybody, and we're signed off.